And then I'll turn it over to you. So I'd ask the clerk to call or announce the meeting and call the roll.
The special session of duty by government is being held Thursday, January 29, 2015 at six o'clock PM in the Fifth Court Commons Room for a Mark presentation on Homeland Security and 911. Roll call, Corvia.
Here.
Maddox, Kane, Martin.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Childress, Walker.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Keating.
Here.
Collins.
Here. All right, with the previous introduction, we'll let Mr. Paus and Ms. Lynch begin their presentation.
Good evening. We've just worked out how we're going to do this. And since I'm responsible for 911 and 911 is really the key to the emergency operations or emergency response, and Erin is responsible for the Homeland Security, we'll start with me and say the best for last. So. The MARK 911, regional 911 system was actually started back in 1983. It's a interlocal agreements between nine counties, or eight counties and the Emergency Services Board in Cass County. Every county has signed an agreement for MARK to administer the 911 program for all of the counties. The mission of the 911 program is to provide a efficient and reliable method for the public to be able to reach emergency services in their time of need. The, as I said, we're responsible for administering the 911 program. And so basically what that means is the MARK Public Safety Program is responsible for getting a 911 call from a caller to the Public Safety Answering Point or PSEP. Once it reaches the PSEP, it's the responsibility of the PSEP, in this case, the Fire Department of Kansas City, Missouri, Kansas City, Kansas Police and Fire, to actually dispatch that call and handle all the things related to that. So once the call is completed, that's the end of the 911's responsibility. MARK is responsible for purchasing, maintaining all the 911 equipment. So the 911 equipment that's in your PSEP is purchased by MARK. And we do that on a cost-shared basis. The annual budget for the MARK Public Safety Program is about $5.7 million for 2015. The cost for that is distributed among the counties based upon population. Wyandotte County is 8.38% of the population of the region, so you pay 8.3% of the bill. In your case, that comes to about $470,000 annually. In the case for Wyandotte County, that is supported by the 911 tax levied on all devices capable of contacting 911, landlines, wireless, and VoIP, and any future devices that may be able to contact 911. That money is collected by the state and then returned to you. So the cost of delivering a 911 call is covered by the 911 tax. Any cost for the radio system, computer dispatch systems, is all borne by the unified government. We're currently upgrading the equipment. A number of years ago, we borrowed money and purchased equipment to allow us to be able to route wireless calls ourselves. So basically, in the region, there are actually two 911 systems. There's the wireline system that has been around for a long time, and then the wireless system, which is a separate system. The reason I tell you that is because if for some reason your landline, let me ask this, how many of you still have a landline at home? Okay. It's an unusual number.
I do not.
The, so the, if you dial a landline and it doesn't work, try your wireless device because they're two separate networks, which is a level of redundancy that not many people in the country have. So keep that in mind as you're traveling about. Nearly 80% of our calls come from wireless devices now. The impact of that is, an event that happens at, say, on I-70, an accident. It used to be 20 years ago that somebody would get off the highway at a gas station, call 911 and report the accident. Now, there may be 50. A trash truck fire on a highway one time generated 54 calls, and that was all to the same answering point. So the wireless calls make up a large piece of our work, and that becomes a, one of the things that we do is help locate those calls. Wireless, a wireline call is very easy to locate. It's attached to the wall, and the telephone company gives us specific address. A wireless call goes to a tower that doesn't care about jurisdictional boundaries. So if you have, there's a tower that is in Sixth Street in Kansas City, Missouri, that actually covers more of Kansas City, Kansas than it does Kansas City, Missouri because of the way the tower is configured. So our job, one of our big jobs, and we have a staff of three that works on this, is to make sure the call is routed to the proper location. So we work with the telephone companies, the wireless service providers, to make sure that if a call hits a particular face of a tower, it goes to the correct PSEP. And we worked with the PSEP's to make sure that that is what they need. One of the unique things about the 911 system in our region is it is really one system. There are, in the new system, there will be three hosts, and all the other PSEP's will be connected to those hosts. So we reduce the cost. It used to be everybody had their own server in the back room. We've reduced that. They're connected by a microwave link that we're building, replacing leased T1's. We're saving, this year, we'll save about $60,000 on leased T1 costs by using microwave. The other thing that that does, because we're all connected, if something was to happen to your PSEP, we can reroute those 911 calls to another PSEP or your backup, so we can continue by 911 service no matter what may have happened to the rest of the community. We can route those calls not just to your backup, but we can route those calls to another PSEP, Kansas City, Missouri, Johnson County. So we can always, always make sure that there is 911 service within the region. To tie onto that, you just recently implemented a new radio system. That radio system is part of what we call MARS, the Metropolitan Area Regional Radio System. Kansas City, Missouri has what they call a master site controller, or the brains of the outfit. Johnson County has one, and those are shared by other cities in the region. You're connected to the Johnson County master site controller. They cost about a million dollars. If you had to put one of those in yourself, your cost would have gone up a million dollars. But if you didn't, you're sharing that. That's another example of regional cooperation. But what that really does, it allows you to be able to communicate with other police departments, fire departments, and EMS providers within the region. Example, a car chase started Saturday evening in Johnson County. It ended in Smithville. It went through four counties, and I lost track of how many police departments were involved, including Kansas City, Missouri helicopter. But the important thing was that the officers who were involved in the chase were able to talk to each other and talk to their dispatchers. So we've achieved a level of interoperability here that really doesn't exist too many other places. So when we say if something was to happen to your PSEP, we can still provide 911 service and through the radio system, still dispatch your cars to your calls. We're currently working with the wireless carriers testing, texting to 911. We've actually started at Johnson County, the larger PSEP, and one of the reasons we've started there is because Johnson County, Olathe, is the home to the Kansas School for the Death. So that's a logical place to start. So we're working with them to test that. We'll have that implemented by the end of the second quarter of this year, I believe. The, I've hit the high points. One of the things that we do is we also serve as a point of contact, a single point of contact. So you will never see a bill for 911 except from MARK. You will not receive a telephone bill because we serve as a single point of contact. We collect those bills, and we pay those bills after they're properly analyzed. We contract for language lines. So if a non-English speaking individual calls a PSEP, we can transfer that call or get an interpreter on the line. With 90% of the calls that we use a language line are Spanish-speaking, so we actually start with a Spanish interpreter first. And if we have something else such as Farsi, or we've done 31 languages, and I'm sorry to say that there are some of them I can't pronounce what the language is. They're able to find interpreters for those languages. We provide that service to the dispatcher so they can able to communicate with anybody. Be happy to answer any questions. I kind of skimmed the top of that, but it's.
Any questions?
Just one quick line there. Will you ever get, will it ever be fixed that when my Rosedale residents call 911, that'll actually be answered in Kansas and not you have to go to Missouri and then get transferred to Kansas Dispatch?
Is it a wireless call?
I don't know. I haven't.
If it's wireline, it should be answered at your PSEP because that's.
Wireless?
Wireline, wireline.
If it's a wired line, it should be answered in Kansas.
Yes.
I think most of them then are probably cell phones.
Right. That is, that is a function of the physics. A cellphone tower is three-sided. That tower, that face is directed to a particular PSEP. So where the biggest portion of coverage that would be, that's how that's going to be routed. It's, there's no way we can get around that. There's a, like I said, the tower that I mentioned earlier is actually in Kansas City, Missouri. Still covers a lot of Kansas City, Missouri, but the biggest chunk of that particular tower face covers Kansas City, Kansas. So it's answered in Kansas City, Kansas.
Okay.
That's, that's the, but one of the things of, by having the same system, it is not a big deal for that call to be transferred. The system is set up so on the display the call taker sees, they can immediately transfer by hitting one button from Kansas City, Missouri to you. There was an outage back in May of last year. Somehow AT&amp;T decided that they would reroute to Kansas City, Missouri without ever telling Kansas City, Missouri, which is something we're dealing, working with AT&amp;T on. But in listening to the tapes, the call was transferred, it was immediately answered in Kansas City, Missouri. They realized it didn't belong to Kansas City, Missouri, and they transferred it right back where it should have gone.
Okay.
They know that. And that's one of the reasons we're, on the texting solution, we have one that allows transferring because we transfer a lot.
All right, thank you.
As Keith said, he really focuses on 911 and interoperability. Everything else sort of lands in emergency services and falls under five broad categories. And you have a handout that I shared with you because as the mayor mentioned, it's a very broad agenda in emergency preparedness that the region is working cooperatively towards. And the, it is around prevention and protection, mitigation, response, and recovery. And there are specific strategies that the emergency services community has come together around to try and address all five of those mission areas. And they've really done that through focusing heavily on building the relationships that allow so many things to happen. As Keith mentioned, this regional radio system is the outcome of agencies working together at the same time and seeing a way to both benefit their own jurisdictions, but to design a system that has regional benefit. And that, that's just such a powerful way to be able to approach public policy and to serve the community at large. Looking for protocols for regional actions, so some sort of agreed-upon ways to go about approaching a situation. So when you're providing aid to your neighbor, you know what to expect. We realize that every disaster starts and ends locally, and never do we want to take away the decision-making or the accountability of local jurisdictions. What we want to do as a region is to work together to be able to support each other. Whether you're having a large event and you need mutual aid, or whether it's a large incident like the 2001 ice storm when the entire region was impacted all at the same time. Focusing on the sharing and coordination of resources. As the mayor said, much of our work exploded after 9/11, and there was a real risk at that time at every one of the 119 jurisdictions, all trying to develop specialized capabilities. And if that were to have occurred, it would, it would not have been successful. The amount of training that's required, the amount of equipment that's required, it just would have fragmented the resources coming into the region. So local leadership were very sort of far-thinking in saying, let's have a regional approach to how we're going to try to prepare the community following 9/11, focusing on equipment, training, and exercise that enhance capabilities of local areas, and then improve surveillance and early detection and mitigation of hazards and threats. You'll see here the picture sort of at a glance of the area that we try to serve. And I would say that you can see it in terms of the number of public safety agencies and the hospitals in the EMS community, the number of fire departments. Yet at the same time, it's also really important that all of this is intended to serve the public. So understanding the complexity of the individuals that make up our community and the needs that they have. So when disaster strikes, being prepared to meet a variety of needs. Additionally, I would add that in, on the Missouri side, in addition to this footprint you see here.
Can I, can I interrupt for just a second?
Sure.
Can you trade micro, can you hand that microphone to her? We're having difficulty with the sound.
Can you hear me now?
Well, just put it in front, that microphone is not picking up, so I apologize.
Oh, no problem. And so the footprint for the area that we serve in emergency services on the Missouri side includes eight other counties when it comes to the health and medical work. So it's a really sort of broad, broad effort to help support preparedness. If you look on page two, there are just a couple of really key regional committees that have formed over the years that are really important for you to be familiar with. And one is our Marker Committee, which is our pre-hospital care, started in 1973. Many say as a result of and in recognition of the challenges associated with the Hyatt Regency collapse. But it very much is focused on bringing together the emergency response community, so EMS with hospitals, to make sure there is a way for them to communicate with each other en route to the hospital. So communications is the backbone of Marker. In addition, they provide training and cooperative purchasing and look at legislative issues affecting the EMS industry. With this recent Ebola situation, it was phenomenal to sit in the meeting in November and listen to the EMS agencies across the by-state area and the hospitals really coordinate at a very tactical level, trying, coming up with a common way to communicate certain information in a safe way, talking about how to receive a patient, all of those things that we may have been talking about in theory really came to play. And that's just in that, in that one committee, and I'll talk more about the larger effort later. Another committee are the Metropolitan Emergency Managers. They come together on a monthly basis, and they try to look for opportunities to work together to make a difference. And one program I'd mentioned in specific is Project Community Alert. It is an effort to be able to work with Midland Radio, Price Chopper, and the emergency managers to get all hazards weather radios in homes. So if there's a tornado, you have a way to be alert and ready and know what action to take. And I've been involved for a long time, and the goal was 100,000 radios, and we are very, very close. We're at like 900 and some. So it is, it is hopeful that we'll meet that target today. But that's an example of if a single jurisdiction was trying to do something, it just wouldn't have the same power as coming together collectively and trying to, trying to make a difference. The Local Emergency Planning Committee, the Local Emergency Planning Committee is really designed to bring together the facilities that house hazardous materials, the transporters of hazardous materials, and the fire service, hazmat, and other first responders with citizens and others to think about hazardous materials. We know here in this area that we are the second-largest rail hub. We know that we have a number of facilities that house hazardous materials. In our economy, we rely on chemicals for day-to-day operations. But the reality is, no matter how safe you are, there are inherent risks. And so the Local Emergency Planning Committee serves, initially served a five-county area, and just a couple of years ago, Leavenworth, Wyandotte, and Johnson joined our LEPC. And it's so helpful because hazardous materials don't stop at the state line. It really is helpful to work together collectively and understand the risks on both sides of the state line and look for ways to address it. As Keith talked about, he talked about the regional 911 system, and it is one of the, it is one of the renowned systems in the state in the country around 911, and it is a backbone with our regional homeland security effort. If you look at the bottom of your page, you'll see a circle with a hub in it, and in it is the Regional Homeland Security Coordinating Committee. This is on page two of your document. And you'll see that this really is our table of organization for the Homeland Security Coordinating Committee that was formed after 9/11 in 2002 in an effort to work cooperatively to help the Kansas City region be prepared for all of the uncertainty that came after 9/11. And you'll see that it is not a traditional table of organization. That would have never been successful. It's a circle, and we really call it our Circle of Friends, designed to unify the work that's going on and to minimize duplication and maximize resources. And its outer ring are all regional committees. Some of them are topic-specific. Some of them, like Mohaca, the public health directors, have a very broad agenda from addressing concerns with smoking and health to emergency preparedness. On the inner circle, you'll see another, a number of subcommittees. Those are subcommittees that have formed by state and nature to address specific items. That structure, I'm convinced, is what has allowed the region to stay together and be so strong for so long. We're in 2015 now, and we started working together in 2002, and there is still a lot of energy and support and recognition in the emergency response community of the uncertainty of the environment and the world we live in and how important it is to stay prepared. If you look on page three, you can see the 13 goals that the region's been working towards since 2002. And you can see that it's a very broad agenda. Number three, number four is interoperability, and that's what Keith was talking about. And as I talk about, what I think is so important tonight is for you to have an awareness of the great regional capabilities that exist today, largely because of the leadership of the emergency response personnel from Wyandotte County. If you look on page four, it says regional capabilities. And you can see on the far-left-hand side, again, thinking in terms of prevention and protection, mitigation and response. In the middle, you can see the regional resource investments that have been made. And I just want to sort of touch on them and acknowledge how important Wyandotte County professionals have been to the capability that we have. The first are the, is the Enhanced Tactical Team. These are, there are eight agencies that have come together to form this team, and KCK is one of them. They are specially trained to operate in unknown environments and to be able to basically take out the bad guy if the need arises. And to do that in a way that allows them to continue to be safe. So they're operating in a high level of personal protective equipment, doing law enforcement functions. We have a local fusion center. If you'll remember after 9/11, the criticism that came from not being able to connect the dots on information. This was an effort to try to increase information sharing amongst law enforcement and also non-law enforcement and the public. Enhanced bomb squads that are equipped and trained and ready to respond to a variety of circumstances. Again, KCK is a part of that capability. And what's neat about that is those 17 teams in the region are, they train together, and they're really interoperable. And so they come to the aid routinely. When you have a suspicious package, they're always backing each other up. And more and more today, we're responding to a number of suspicious packages. Community emergency response teams. It's not only the police, fire, and EMS, but it's also the citizens, giving the citizens a way to themselves be trained to know what to do in their home, to know how to help their neighbor, and ultimately to volunteer and help the community at large. And so that is a program that the emergency services, emergency management directors have supported for a number of years. And it's a great way to engage the community in building a safer region. Under response, Keith already talked about the interoperable communications. There are also mobile interoperable communications, and we're just in such a better place than we were 10 or 15 years ago. Looking at the health and medical resources, there are a number of mobile resources that are housed at area hospitals, housed at public health departments, all that can work independently or come together and address very large issues. So beneficial at a local level and also in those really large events. Our tech rescue system. We are fortunate to have a regional tech rescue system, and KCK Fire is an instrumental part of it. Chief Greg Duke has been consistent in developing that capability. And that's a capability that if you have a building collapse or any other structural collapse, that they are trained and know how to safely go in and are equipped to be able to try to recover individuals at a time when it's a life safety issue or even when it goes into recovery. Hazmat teams. As I mentioned, the reality is we have hazardous materials in our area. And so, and I think all of us remember the anthrax scare a number of years ago. So having a capability in the hazmat community that they are now able to respond to incidents that they were not able to respond to before because they're properly equipped and they have the specialized equipment to be able to identify what they're dealing with. Mass fatality, something folks don't really want to think about. However, you know, Joplin was a harsh reminder that disasters occur. However, you know, Joplin was a harsh reminder that disasters occur and lives are lost, and when that happens, there is nothing more important to family members than as quickly as possible having information and being able to deal with the tragedy. Through the efforts of the KCR Mor group, there is now an, a mass fatality capability, bringing the coronors and medical examiners together. So it would allow things to happen more quickly and to meet the needs of the family members that will remain in that sort of tragedy. That, that didn't exist 10 years ago at all. Mass care resources. You know, during the 93 floods and again with the ice storm, need for mass care, our capability today is significantly higher than it was a number of years ago. And again, mobile resources, because in our area, you have no idea where it's going to happen, but you just need to be prepared and be able to adapt. Medical Reserve Corps. One of the challenges always when you do open shelters, it's difficult to find the trained health and medical folks to deal with the health and medical needs that arise in shelters. And so having, we now have a cadre of 100 folks from across the metro, some medical and some non-medical, and they are ready to respond either to something in the metro area or to either the state of Kansas or the state of Missouri. And then there are several systems that the region has invested in and are now in existence today. One of them is called X-Sentinel, and it really is a by-state disease surveillance system, and it allows information sharing around cases between the public health agencies. Oftentimes, you're going to a doctor's office in one jurisdiction, but you may live in another and work in another, and so it's just very helpful to be able to connect those dots. Badging and accountability, having a way to ensure we know who is in the scene. After 9/11, there was a lot of uncertainty about who, who responded where, and in the aftermath, there, there was a need to verify that information for everything that comes following disasters from a legal standpoint. Web EOC, having an information sharing system amongst the emergency operation centers and for use within the area, EOCs, and then GIS. And that really is just my effort at saying very quickly, there were specific goals and specific capabilities now exist because of the cooperative effort. If you look on page five, you'll see where some of those specialized resources reside. I would just sort of again mention, they are available to respond within the entire region, and that's, that's their commitment. At the bottom of the page, you'll see some of the responses to real emergencies that have occurred. This is by no means intended to be a comprehensive list, but just to give you a sense that the investments that have been made do have utility and value and have, have been utilized here in the region and also deployed across the state. I think our challenge today, of course, is sustaining the capabilities that currently exist. The homeland security funding, as the mayor noted, was very high at one time and is now very, very low. And so the Regional Homeland Security Coordinating Committee is trying to find ways to sustain those most core capacities, and this year is reaching out to all of the communities and asking for contributions to help with that effort. And I think that our hope is we're able to extend these capabilities as long as we can in order to provide that level of readiness to the region. So with that, I'll stop, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes.
I was just going to make a, a quick comment. So some of you know, my husband, my husband and my uncle are both heavily involved in our local CERT team, and if you've never paid any attention to that group, you ought to look into it. It's just amazing how well-trained this team of community members are and how empowered they are to handle emergencies in the absence of or until the arrival of traditional emergency response teams. So I just happen to have some additional exposure to that, and I would say if you've never, if you've never looked into it, you ought to look into it. Not only do they have training activities themselves, they also serve as the victims for some of the mass emergency trainings that are done regionally for our traditional emergency response teams. So it's a very interesting program.
Commissioner, I'd just also like to recognize with us this evening is our Director of Emergency Management, Matt May, sitting in the crowd. Some of you may not have been able to have met him since he's been on board with this for the past year, but thanks for joining us, Matt.
All right. Well, I appreciate the comprehensive work that you all do, and it is, as you look at those charts, the Wyandotte County Unified Government employees are heavily involved in all of these activities and hold many of the leadership roles across the region. And so we're heavily invested in this and poised to benefit from it. Hopefully, we won't need to, but we are poised to benefit from it and poised to provide aid to surrounding communities as needed. And so I think it's an important resource, and I think it's important that we're aware of it and that our community is aware of the great work that Mark is doing on our behalf. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your coming out tonight.
We'd like to mention I brought some brochures on tips for calling 911, both in English and Spanish.
Thank you very much. All right. With that, we are adjourned from this meeting, and we will reconvene at 7:00 o'clock downstairs in the chamber.
Correct.
Yeah.